Good evening. Before we get started tonight, we have a couple of proclamations that I'd like to present. The first one, if the garrisons would join me up front with Amelia. Amelia struggles with trisomy, 18, and the month of March is trisomy awareness month. So we'd like to do a proclamation. I'd like to read it. Whereas during the month of March, trisomy awareness month is observed to encourage citizens to increase their awareness of trisomy, a genetic disorder that deeply affects families. And whereas trisomy is a difference, or excuse me, the presence within a person's cells of a single extra chromosome yielding a total of three chromosomes instead of a pair. And whereas the most common trisomies in newborns are trisomy 21, which is Down syndrome, trisomy 18, which is Edwards syndrome, and trisomy 13, which is Patao syndrome. And whereas local support groups, medical professionals, and online communities offer education, encouragement, and counseling for these managing trisomy pregnancies or raising trisomy-affected children. And whereas now is the time for education on all forms of trisomy, support families currently experiencing trisomy, and participate in helping people with developmental disabilities achieve their full potential. And this is a little miracle girl here. So now therefore, I, Don Adams, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek of Ohio, along with the entire Beaver Creek City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as trisomy awareness month in the city of Beaver Creek, and encourage all citizens of Beaver Creek to reach out and support those families affected. So I'd like to give that to you. And did you guys, do you want to say something? Okay. Did you get the photos? Okay. Yes. Sure. There we go. I'd like to ask Rob and Julie Stanton to come forward. We have a busy month in March. Rob and Julie are representing the Red Cross, and we're doing a proclamation for that as well. So whereas the American Red Cross has been a beacon of hope and support for communities across the United States for over a century, and whereas the American Red Cross has provided vital assistance to individuals and families affected by disasters, including hurricanes, wildfires, and pandemics, offering shelter, food, and comfort in times of crisis. And whereas the American Red Cross plays a crucial role in promoting health and safety through its blood donation services, CPR and first aid training, and disaster preparedness education, saving countless lives each year. And whereas the American Red Cross relies on the dedication of its volunteers, donors, and staff members, whose selfless efforts uphold the organization's humanitarian mission established by its founder, Clara Barton. And whereas March is recognized as a month in honor of those who lead with their hearts to serve those in need with a generous spirit that is woven into the community. Now therefore, I, Don Adams, Mayor of the City of Beaver Creek, along with the entire Beaver Creek City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2024 American Red Cross Month in the city of Beaver Creek, and encourage all citizens to recognize and support the valuable work that the American Red Cross in serving our community and saving lives. Thank you very much. And these two right here apparently spend a lot of time with the Red Cross. How many hours do you do?
Well, this was what, 150 hours? I don't know.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Doer.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Littrell.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bales.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Move this to Councilmember Littrell.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilman Littrell. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign? All right. If you would, please rise. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if you don't want to remain standing just for a moment, and bow your heads in prayer.
Father, the almighty source of wisdom, guide our deliberations today as we gather to serve our community. Grant us the clarity of mind to make decisions that uphold justice, equality, and the common good. Make our words and actions reflect the values of compassion, integrity, and respect for all. Amen.
And we have an agenda before us. Any additions or...
Hope we approve the agenda, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? We have some minutes in front of us for the February 2024 work session. Any changes, additions?
Move your approved work session minutes from February 20th, 2024. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for February 20th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Now we move on. Ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. Ordinance 24-25, excuse me, five.
Ordinance 24-5, an ordinance by the Beaver Creek City Council repealing the current section 97.13, cutting and removal of weeds, grass, and other overgrown vegetation of the Beaver Creek codified ordinances and adopting, excuse me, a new section 97.13, cutting and removal of weeds, grass, and other overgrown vegetation of the Beaver Creek codified ordinances to provide for appeals of violations of sections 97.10, 97.11, and 97.12 of the Beaver Creek codified ordinances and the related fines and costs imposed.
This is the first reading of this ordinance. Mr. Baugh.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Thank you. What we're doing here is providing, as the clerk read in the summary, providing an appeal process, or at least a notice within the actual grass-cutting bill that's received to provide. And the reason we're doing that is it's constitutionally, it is not the actual bill of cutting the grass so much, but it is the combined ultimate assessment. And so we're giving someone who has an objection a right, or at least an opportunity, to express their concern with a charge, such that because the ultimate goal here is that come fall, they'll be combined and assessed, which then at that point, in theory, could result in someone losing certain rights of property if ultimately it's never paid. So it could be marshaled and effectively property sold. That doesn't really happen, but that is, I mean, that could be a process that would be involved. So the point of this is to provide an appeal so that anyone who receives this, and it's really based upon some case law that when we had an issue somewhat with this, it would involve grass cutting, wasn't the assessment, but it involved grass cutting. And I felt it'd be good to put an appeal process in there, the notice of it.
And it goes with the board of zoning appeals?
Yes. Yeah. Because the other alternative was to run everything through council, but that'd be more probably a one-time thing. But this is set up to do it, just as part of the notice when you receive the statement that your grass was cut. So.
Thank you. Any input from council?
Personally, I think it's a very nice move. Gives people the opportunity for appeal. Having served a couple years on Board of Zoning Appeals, it's a very nice usage of that board. Sometimes they're not always the most active in terms of cases, so this would give them additional work, which most would enjoy. So I think all around, a good move.
This is an ordinance, so it is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to say anything about this, please come forward, state your name and address. Don't everybody come up at once now. Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of it. There is nothing else. Do we have a motion?
Motion to move ordinance 24-5 to a second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move ordinance 24-5 to the second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much. Resolution 24-7.
Resolution 24-7, a resolution pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 128.08, for Beaver Creek City Council to approve the final plan for Green County 911 system, county-wide 911 system.
Thank you. This is Mr. Landrum.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is, as if you remember, a couple weeks ago, we had Speaker Nathan from the, actually, he's the 911 coordinator, but also chief at the Beaver Creek Fire Department, came and informed us about the 911 next-generation plan. What was in the packet is the plan. This was adopted by the committee that I serve on. It's all been signed off and approved, I think it was March 6th, whatever last Tuesday or Wednesday was. And it's been approved. This has to be to the state by, I think it's the 3rd or 4th of April. We need at least 60% of the county population to have approved it, to be able to submit it to the state. Again, the 911 committee has approved this. There will be, this has nothing to do with any of the upcoming, also what the county is working on, you know, 911 consolidation or dispatch plan. This has nothing to do with all that. That's a couple-year study that the county has just embarked on. As that study progresses, and if there's any changes to the dispatching, then this plan, of course, may be updated to reflect those changes. But I just wanted to stress that those two have nothing to do with what's being submitted at this time. So if there's not any question, this is the plan. I'll be able to submit back to the county our resolution, along with the approval, so that they can prepare to provide it to the state.
Input from council? Questions? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve Resolution 24-7.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 24-7. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign? Very good. Resolution, we're moving right along here. Resolution 24-11.
Resolution 24-11, a resolution declaring the necessity for the construction or repair of certain sidewalks, curbs, or gutters in the city of Beaver Creek.
Mr. Mormon.
City Mayor, Members of the City Council.
Now it's not us talking.
Absolutely. At the February 26 meeting, City Council approved a resolution authorizing staff to proceed with the sidewalk repair program. Since the approval of that resolution, staff has been out to inspect all the walks on this year's resurfacing and curb program. We've identified, I think, 24 individual properties where we recommend repairs be made to the sidewalk. In addition, we've estimated the quantity to be done, cost. We've also physically marked all those locations in front of all these properties. The next step in this process is the approval of the resolution you have before you this evening. The resolution would approve the, again, the estimated cost, locations, et cetera. And it would provide for a 60-day time period for property owners to make repairs using a contractor of their choosing. Again, just to let you know, after, or if the resolution is approved tonight, the next step would be, a copy of that resolution would be sent to all the impacted property owners, along with a flyer we're still putting together. That would kind of summarize the purpose of the program, the options a homeowner has, et cetera. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Jeff, have you gotten any calls already about the markings?
We have not, but the markings just went down today. So we're ready for any calls on that. Right. Thank you.
I think this discussion is just the same cut point as the February 26 meeting, so I voted in opposition to it. I can't say I've been through this area a ton, but I've been through here a few times. Sidewalks look fine to me. I run on a lot of sidewalks. I think they're in good working condition. So it's just my position is the same from February 26.
I guess I would agree to that as well. I'm stuck in a rock and a hard place here because I definitely, you know, Councilman Doer and I did voice our opposition, but at the same time, I don't want to impede the city's progress now that it is something that's moving forward as well. So I appreciate you taking the time and going out and kind of moving forward with this already since it has been approved.
My support, I believe, as I said at the last meeting, that hopefully people would do their own repairs, or have a contractor do it under their auspices, but we'd give them that opportunity. And if it's not done, why, ultimately, of course, assessment is the procedure that has to be followed, but I hope for the volunteer effort. But the city has to have a fallback to protect its own situation.
Forgive me if you said this and I just missed it. How much sidewalk was actually examined, and how much did we end up marking up? Rough estimate.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, there's a summary sheet that's attached to the resolution that kind of shows the areas that we found. And we have a grand total of 924 square feet that we're recommending be replaced. And we got a very good price this year on our contract, so the $18 a square foot is a very, very good price for the work, so luckily. As far as like the length, I didn't bring that with me tonight. I apologize for that, the total number of length of streets that were looked at. I don't have that with me, so.
That's okay.
Do you happen to know the approximate age of the sidewalk?
Yeah, I believe it kind of varies. Obviously, it's a little bit newer. We have some streets in Hunter's Ridge that are a little bit newer. Some of those are like early 2000s-ish. Rustic Trail, I think, is like an 80s development, 80s, 90s.
It looks like some people have redone their own as part of the driveway improvement in that area.
Yeah, that's something we see typically, especially in areas with the roll curb section. It's a little bit tough to get into your driveways, and many times homeowners decide to replace it on their own due to that factor.
I guess the question I had, if it was in there, I apologize, I missed it. The criteria that you use to determine what should be replaced.
Yeah, we have a couple criteria. The big one is the difference in height between two sidewalk panels, which is the vast majority of the ones you have before you tonight. We were going with a half-inch difference between sidewalk panels. Anything at a half-inch or higher, we're recommending replacement on that. We also have a, I don't think cracks weren't that big, and the ones we inspected at least, but yeah, cracks over a half-inch as well, so.
And Mr. Mayor, that was at council's request. End of last week, I sent the final policy, the internal policy on that.
I probably just, yeah.
Yeah, I know. That had the details of all the conditions, separation of this, height of this, has all those details that the inspectors would be looking at to match. And those, I had asked too, Mr. Mormon, how those were determined. You want to answer that on how were those standards based upon?
Yeah, yes, certainly. When we were putting the policy together, we kind of took a broad look at what other municipalities are doing, and a half-inch seems to be kind of what a lot of people are going with. And I should mention too, there is an argument to go even less than that. You could even go down to like a quarter inch, which I think is more ADA standards. But in looking at it, a quarter inch seems like so minute and minor. We kind of elected to go with a half-inch for this year's program, instead of drawing into that little quarter-inch bump there, so.
Anything else from council? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 24-11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 24-11. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Mayor, Members of council. Before you this evening, we have a new liquor permit for the Tokyo Grill and Sushi 5 Incorporated. The Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, sent us notification of this request for a new D1 liquor permit for that location, that business located at 2731 Fairfield Commons. It's in the mall up there, right there by the main entrance. The records checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, were completed on the applicants and the shareholders, and there were no concerns or issues. Staff is recommending this application move forward without further comment. Move to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept without comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you, Chief. That was quick. Council time. Let's see. Councilwoman Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity last week to do the Chambers Lunch Local at City Barbecue, and I have to say, it has been a while since I have been out during lunchtime, and it was packed. There was a huge line out the door. I'm not sure if it may correlate with Chick-fil-A being closed, but there was not a seat in the house. And so it's really good to see the businesses thriving and kind of rebounding after the COVID pandemic. I was also able to attend the first Thursday at the Holiday Inn. It was a wonderful event. Was able to take Judson out for one of his first events now that he's a toddler, and he was thankfully well-behaved, and so we enjoyed ourselves. And last, I wanted to give an update on the Region 14 meeting. As I discussed last time, we were trying to decide whether our region was going to set an allocation formula, and whether we were going to set regional priorities. As a region, we decided that we were not going to set any priorities. We kind of went around the room. Each county discussed its priorities, and they were all across the board. And so since it is our first year in receiving funding, we have decided that we will see what comes in the door, and then we can kind of make our decisions based upon that. In addition to that, we've also agreed that there will be no allocation, formal allocation. And essentially, what that means is we're not going to allocate it by county, and we're not going to allocate it by specific priorities. Most of the regions took that position because this is regional funding, and so we should look at the proposals that are coming in and evaluate them on a regional basis. And so the board voted. Both of those were accepted by the board. The next big task is who is going to serve on the review committees when these proposals come in. And so that decision is going to be made at our next meeting, which is at the end of the month. The big question is, is it going to just be one representative from each county? Is it going to be everyone that's sitting on the board? Some counties would like their local boards to be able to review these proposals and their local experts, and so we're really kind of trying to determine how wide of a net we want to cast, because, you know, this is a review of proposals, and so it's got to have a lot of people looking at things and meeting deadlines in order to get this money out the door. So those are the things that we are looking at. The big announcements is the RFP. So the RFP for the grants actually went active on March 4th, so it is out there for everyone to see. Applications will start being accepted on April 2nd. And so you can go out, look at the RFP. If you have any questions, you can reach out to the foundation. And all applications will be due on May 3rd. From there, we don't have a definite timeline on when grants will be awarded. It really just depends on the number of grants, applications that we get, how they are allocated amongst the states, because they are supposed to be designating regions that they would like to serve, the applicants. And there will also be some regional meetings where they will come to your region and kind of discuss the application process, the RFPs, things we're looking for. So if anyone is interested in that, I would encourage you to go to the One Ohio Foundation website. As of right now, Region 14 does not have their scheduled meeting yet. When it becomes available, obviously, let everyone know. But in the event that maybe it becomes public before the next meeting, the website is oneohiofoundation.com, and you can get all of the latest and greatest, as well as the grant application, RFP. With that, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Schwartz, or excuse me, Councilwoman Garcia. You already said yours.
Thank you. Not too much this week. I do want to thank Vice Mayor Bales for attending the MBRPC meeting for me, since I had a few conflicts that day. And the only thing I have to report from there is that I was, I guess, reappointed to serve on the executive committee for MBRPC, so our city will maintain a presence on the executive board, as well as the overarching MBRPC board as well. So thank you for helping. Other than that, that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Councilman Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Three items. One is, I was in the country of Iceland for a good chunk of the last week, so apologize for being a bit jet-lagged. It's about, it's almost midnight now for me, but doing fine. But the point of that is, I was chatting with a local rep about CFIUS, simply because in a lot of other allied countries, there are adversaries buying up land and property and things of that nature. And it occurred to me that since we have a number of our council going to the DC fly-in in May, just to pass that along, to think about, you know, for those, I remember Councilwoman Garcia conversation kind of kicked all of this off, and it struck me that just, this is the type of legislation that can be applied to NATO allies, and just something to pass along should the conversation arise. Chief, I'd like to pass along a commendation. My wife works at a preschool here in Beaver Creek, and Sergeant Brownlee came to the classes and was unanimously applauded by all teachers and students, so really amazing job by him, so please pass along my thanks. And then finally, I concluded my first season as a assistant coach to the Lego League team. So I'm a little out of my element in the STEM field, but it was a steam that is science, technology, arts, engineering, and math designed this season, and so I had a blast playing with Legos and helping coach students, and, but I think more broadly, I'd like to thank our community and sponsors for being part of something so good for our students and really developing the next generation of engineers and those that can serve at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base in a range of different areas. It really is remarkable, and to see it at the elementary school level was a privilege and a lot of fun as well. So I enjoyed that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Curran.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple items here. I had the opportunity to attend the Beaver Creek Women's League first Wednesday of the month, and Wendy, the director of our Chamber of Commerce spoke, and that was the message there. Also, to remind everybody who's listening that the Beaver Creek Women's League has their scholarship luncheon at first Saturday in April. And if anybody's interested, we'd want to contact Beaver Creek Women's League. Secondly, had the opportunity to attend the first Thursday, and it was really fine, Mayor, to see the crowd and to hear a bit of the emerge message. That was kind of the focus of that event. And then the big thing for me was the opportunity, along with the mayor, to really recognize Joe Ferguson. We recognized that at the other meeting, and of course, she's received a lot of publicity, and it was really nice to see the crowd at the Senior Citizen Center for Joe. And it was really nice to see the crowd at the Senior Citizen Center for Joe. Also coming up Wednesday is the St. Patrick's Day party and activity at the Senior Citizen Center from 1 to 3. And that's a big thing. Those are a few items. I have also the privilege to recognize happy anniversary this morning, this afternoon, probably the evening. Yeah, there we. Chris Unrow, police, 25 years. Tim Lamert, police, 26 years, or 25 years, excuse me. Josh Kirschbaum, Parks, 23 years. Cian Williams, police, 19 years. Matthew Fries, public service, 12 years. Alex Harris, public service, 10 years. Travis Houston, public service, 10 years. Andrew McVerr, public service, 7. Ashley Stone, police, 6 years. Eric Conley, golf, 6 years. Also Ursula Carey, Parks, 6 years. Dylan Zimmerman, police, 4 years. Don Hutton, planning, 3. Katie Carrico, communications, 3 years. Jeff Vaut, engineering, 3 years. Anthony Nuss, Parks, 3 years. Kevin Humphrey, public service, 2 years. Charles Wykoff, police, 1 year. Jay Drinning, public service, 1 year. Doug Miller, public service, 1 year. Congratulations to all these people. We're all very, very proud of our folks, our family here in the Beaver Creek government, and wish them all the very best. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Bales.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to start off by thanking you and former Mayor Bob Stone for hosting the first Thursday event last week. A lot of money was raised for Emerge Recovery Center. And they're doing an amazing job in our county, and I was glad to be there to support them. I also attended the Green County Builders and Development Forum. I spoke about that a little bit last time as it was coming up. And the group was large. They had 30 or 40 people there, all housing builders, developers, and the ancillary support services, the lenders, and so forth. There was a lot of really good discussion about the issues that they are encountering when building all across our region, from planning, permitting, zoning, construction material costs, labor issues, and so forth. And one thing that I would like to do is potentially host them at a work session so that we can all have a dialogue, kind of back and forth, on what issues they're seeing. Because as we see our neighborhoods and the developments that we're approving and everything else, the housing prices are really high. And so I think it'd be interesting for us to learn and understand, at least from their perspective, what kind of hurdles they're facing. So I would suggest that would be an interesting work session topic. The last thing that I would like to bring up is I did attend the MBRPC Executive Committee and Board of Directors meeting last week. At the meeting, MBRPC approved their state fiscal year 2025 budget. They added a few programs to their budget, which included a Safe Streets for All grant. The grant will be used for MBRPC to develop a, what do they call it here? Countywide Community Action Plan, which we will be a part of, which qualifies us then for the major Safe Streets for All infrastructure funding. So you have to have an action plan first. And once you have one, then you can qualify for the big dollar projects. So I would encourage our staff to participate in those action plan meetings so that all of our projects can get into that pipeline for funding. They also added a budget for a transportation planning for Growth and Resiliency project. These projects will be used for economic development projects as they revolve around roadway issues. So it's kind of a unique way to look at that. And one thing that popped into my head was like the 675 on-ramp from Grange Hall Road, et cetera, et cetera. So there might be some ways we can plug into that funding as well. They also added a line item budget for construction inspection services for a ton of EV charging stations that they're installing throughout the Miami Valley region. So those were some budget highlights. They are also exploring a lease renewal for their headquarters, their offices downtown. And they are actually exploring moving to a different location downtown Dayton because they're growing in staff. Their scope of services has quite expanded since they don't necessarily only focus on transportation projects anymore. They've kind of branched out. So I'm sure Councilwoman Garcia will keep us posted on that issue. They're also exploring rebranding their logo. It has been about eight or nine years since they rebranded. And so new concepts will be emailed to the executive committee for your input. And then last, I just want to congratulate Councilwoman Garcia. I lobbied for her to be included in the executive committee, and they voted for that. So I'm happy that you're there.
Thanks for the support.
You're welcome. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I attended several of these different things as well. One unique thing, I was invited to tour the new infusion unit at Miami Valley South. It's something they've just completed recently, and I was amazed at what they've done there. They've closed off all of the, they don't do baby deliveries there anymore. It's turning this more into a cancer hospital. I was really impressed with the dedication and caring nature of the staff. It was a great facility, but everyone that worked there was really, really into it. And they've offered that opportunity to the rest of you. If you'd like to go visit, let me know. I'll make sure that you get that opportunity. Because they want to do some more work with local governments interacting with that. So just let me know about that. I was at the first Thursday as well. The presentation from Emerge Recovery and Trade Initiative was really good. And I think they raised, I think, a little over $1,000 in cash. And then they were looking for beds because they were just given a new building in Xenia. I think it is, no, Yellow Springs, Yellow Springs. It's an old dormitory. And they needed beds for that. It was $100 a bed, and I think they ended up getting 10 beds that night. So in addition to what they already had, so that was really good. Yeah, it was really great to be part of the Joe Ferguson thing, giving her a proclamation. This young lady's 97 years old, has been with the senior center for over 30 years, since its inception, when I go back to CI Beaver. Actually did a lot with the organization group, organizing group that was able to get the new facility up and running. And she still spends three, two to three days a week, every week over there. So she's donated well over 20,000 hours to our senior center. I was invited to attend the Hindu Temple last Friday, celebrate one of their holidays. It was well over 500 people there for that activity. It was interesting. I stayed a couple hours, didn't understand a word they said, but it was, it was good, so. Yesterday, I was able to attend a Western Ohio Girl Scout Gold Award presentations down at Sinclair. There were 35 young women who were awarded the Gold Award, which is the highest award in Girl Scouts. Four of those young ladies are from Beaver Creek. So after speaking with them, Councilman Duer probably understands the classes they're going to be taking, but I couldn't even pronounce them, let alone try to study them. And then last night, I had the opportunity, was invited to the Second Annual Interfaith Concert held at Beaver Creek High School. They had churches from all over the area come in. It was really an interfaith. I mean, there was Seventh-day Adventists, there was the Jewish church, there was just all kinds of them. There was a lot of, it was really good. At the end, their finale was they all got up on stage and sang "Let There Be Peace on Earth", and there was 235 people on stage. It was impressive, so. And that's all I have. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, Summer Job Showcase, Thursday, March 28, noon to 5, at Beaver Creek Golf Club. City's now accepting applications for full-time, part-time, and seasonal positions in multiple departments and divisions. So please check out our beavercreechohi.gov website and just click on jobs, and all of them will be show up there. But if you, please meet us, if you're interested in any of those, come in person. And you can fill out the application and meet and be interviewed on the spot that day, noon to 5, Beaver Creek Golf Club. Summer Camp, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention this because so many people are interested in this. The camp information was released on March 1, but the early bird registration begins on March 15. So that's coming right up, and they fill up quickly. So starting June 3, and this runs, the camps run through July 26, ages 6 through 13, Monday through Friday, 9:30 to 3:30. And usually, it's at Fairbrook Elementary School on North Fairfield Road. If you're interested in the camps, please watch out and get that early bird registration in. The last thing I'd just say, I wanted to make note, somebody mentioned Officer Brownlee, who is now Sergeant Brownlee. Yeah. And with Sergeant Brownlee, we had another promotion at that time that was, went from detective to Sergeant Williams, now Sergeant Williams. And with that, that left two important positions. That left the vacant detective and our vacant community engagement officers. Both of those have been selected. So Casey McCain is our new detective, so we congratulate her. And our new, and we'll see about chief, won't we, see to bring our new community engagement before council. So, because you'll see him out and about. We congratulate our new CEO, Community Engagement Officer, Travis O'Neil. So we haven't, I think we had an appointment tomorrow afternoon to meet with him. And I met him and know who he is, but you know, just talk about the position and get him up and running rather quickly, because it evolves really quick, as you guys know. So congratulations to him, and he'll be out, he'll do a great job. Both of these officers are tremendous officers. So we have, we're just blessed so much to have that. So they'll be out and about. And so if you see either one of them, congratulate them. But Travis will be out and about as our new CEO, so stop in and say hello to him. That's all I have today.
Thank you very much. Citizen comments? Anyone would like to address council on any subject? Please step forward. State your name and address. Okay, I guess we'll close the citizen comment portion. I'm looking for a motion.
Move adjourned, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.